Okay, it's five o'clock and we're gonna get started because we have a lengthy work session agenda here. This is the City, Minutrista City Work Council Work Session for October 7th, 2024. Present this evening are myself, Lisa Whelan, the mayor, and council members present are Kathleen Revkin, Ellen McGregor, Peter Hickory, and Claudia Lacy. And then staff that's present here is Alice Zepolski, our city engineer, Gary Peters, our director of Public Works, and Alan Paulfoos, director of Administration, and then Jasper Krugel, our city administrator, Brian Grimm, our finance director, and David Abel, our community development director. We have a number of items on our agenda: Water Fund Budget Discussion, the Sewer Fund Budget Discussion, St. Boniface Fire Department Pension Increase Request, a special benefit analysis update of the 2025 road projects, Bayside Jennings Drainage Discussion, Managed Detection and Response Tool for State Members, and then we have a closed session regarding some litigation. So with that, I'm gonna, we're gonna start out with the fund budget discussion. Brian?
Yes, yeah, I'll shake that one or start that one.
Ten, ten slides, right? Max?
Ten minutes?
No.
Oh, ten, so, no, I have no slides, okay.
Not thirty.
No, 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 yeah, no, it's mainly, we're gonna be working off of the item in the packet, so I'm sure everyone's had a chance to read through that. And we did do the, had Shannon Sweeney with David Drowan and Associates update, helped do the update. I know when we did the full study back in 2022, and then it's been a year or two where I've just been updating it, and then I thought it was, like, I could talk, I did talk to Jasper too, and we thought it was a good idea to, you know, have a little bit of, you know, outside help again just for some of the larger projects we have coming up. And it's for a pretty nominal fee, I guess, I wanted to make sure I noted that, or whatever, so. But yeah, so the items that were included in the packet, this is like about the first fifteen pages or so the packet was. I mean, the biggest item is the updated utility rates study there, and then from there is some more internal reports on a draft 25 water budgets, some year-to-date activity, and then tried to just take the current rates and then say, you show the projected rates in just a one-page summary there. As far as the current cash balance in the water funds, about at 1.26 million. And I guess just from going through the rate, well, we can dive into the rate study a little more. It's a thirteen percent rate adjustment is what's, I guess, from a staff perspective and through the consultant, Mr. Sweeney, David Drowan would be recommended for, to adjust in 25, knowing that these large improvements are coming online over the next couple of years, or the main large improvement of the water treatment plant. I guess, yeah, a couple of things to note is that both the utility rates, as well as the connection and area charges were, I guess, recommended or proposed to go up by about thirteen percent. And you probably saw that on the rate summary sheet. I guess, yeah, maybe I'll just flip ahead to page five. I guess I wanna get to the memo that Mr. Sweeney put together. So some of the high points, you know, we looked at maintaining a targeted minimum cash balance of about 1.8 million. Just the rationale behind that is not only does our operating cost, you know, go up every year, and especially, you know, adding another plant will add even more, you know, costs, chemicals, et cetera, but the larger item is the annual debt. Right now, we have about 1.1 million in annual water fund debt, and by the time this is all said and done and the improvement done, it's probably gonna double, or at least close to, it'll be in the low two millions for annual water fund debt. So that's where we need to, obviously, you know, we get the money to pay for it through our rate users, our water users, so that's where you see, and we're trying to do the thirteen percent through, I think it's, tops about on page six, water rate impacts, thirteen percent through 2028, basically, to support that. So instead of doing like, you know, waiting and doing only eight or ten now, and then doing fifteen to twenty later, I guess, our thoughts is that it's better to do thirteen over four years versus do some sort of, you know, eight-eight, sixteen-sixteen, or whatever the math would be. So I guess, you know, we can talk about that. And after that, there's more some inflationary adjustments that are in there for 2029 and beyond. Obviously, that's a ways off. I don't know if it's best just to open it up for some questions, you know, sort of paging through the, you know, some of the executive summary here, you know, it basically ties into, you know, some of the improvements coming up, you know, the fifteen million for the water treatment plant, and then there's another six or so million for some ground well storage in the out years, 2029. So, but obviously, that, you know, will be talked about more as we get closer to that.
Well, that's one of my questions.
Okay, sure.
So, you know, we dropped down in 2029, down to a three percent increase. Is that really realistic if we're gonna spend $6 million for another water tower, water storage, whatever? Or are we just, you know, hey, in 2025, we're gonna be thirteen, and then realistically, 2029, we're gonna have to keep the thirteen percent going to cover the additional six million or more?
It's, I mean, you know, if you're running through the numbers, hopefully, we should have enough of a base buildup that we don't have to do, keep doing thirteen percent, you know, because obviously, the improvement's more six million versus, you know, fifteen million, so it's just the economy's, I guess, the sculpt or whatever is less. But yeah, I guess, it's hard to know for sure until we know how many connections we get over the next four years and how, like, the actual cost, you know, so a water treatment plant can be 12 million versus 15 million. So there's a lot of unknowns, you know, right now, but yeah, I know that's something definitely we wanted to make sure we had in the CIP plan and to plan for, and whether maybe that needs to be six percent versus three percent as we get closer, or eight percent. That'll be, it's probably a little more focused on probably those three to four years, you know, next years as far as.
But the thirteen percent is based on having to spend that six million in 2029. So we're actually kinda like charging ahead of what our needs are. Because we don't really know, we don't, I mean, there's so many variables.
No.
Yeah, because what we're doing is we're saying we will indeed, for sure, be spending the six million in 2029. And so that's what I'm saying is, well, we don't know that for sure. We don't even know if it's gonna be six million.
And obviously, this, you know, we'll look at every year, but I would say the thirteen percent, I think, is pretty conservative for what we need the next few years. I mean, I thought when we originally did this, you know, I think when we had Jasper talk, we were thinking it could be fifteen, eighteen. I mean, it's just, I mean, fifty million dollars is a lot to come up with, and then you add the interest on top of it because we're paying it over twenty years and stuff. I mean, we're adding at least a million in debt every year, pretty much for the next twenty years, you know, starting whenever, you know, we issue the bonds, whether it's next year or whatever. So for 2026 and beyond, that's fixed, locked in. I mean, basically, once we, you know, do it.
Did you, um, do you have any examples of like, what an act? The low end and medium and high end bill would look like, or what it looks like today versus what it looks? Because I think, you know, we're thinking thirteen percent. That sounds like a lot to me, but when you look at it in dollars, then it's easier to digest.
I jotted down a few numbers from just using example of our billing registers. And so someone that uses about fifteen thousand gallons right now, which is a quarter, you know, five thousand a month, you know, that would be a reasonably user, that's what I know I use, that our family of four, is about a hundred and fifteen dollars right now. A thirteen percent increase would be about a hundred and thirty. Someone that, or, you know, property that uses closer to thirty thousand in a quarter, it's about just shy of two hundred dollars right now, a quarter, go up to about two twenty-five, so about a twenty-five dollar increase. Someone that uses sixty thousand in a quarter, keep in mind, that's twenty thousand in a month, you know, that's a decent amount. Go from about four oh eight to four sixty-one, so that's a little over fifty dollars in a quarter. So obviously, if the people that conserve more, I mean, I'd rather do a fifteen dollar increase than a fifty, but it's sort of, it's based on what people use.
No, I know, I just wanted to know. So you're saying that tier one, if it's hundred and fifteen today, it's a hundred and thirty per quarter, not per month?
Correct, yep, yeah, so, yep.
So a fifteen dollar increase, and then two, two hundred would go to two twenty-five, and then four oh eight would go to four sixty-one?
Yeah, yeah, sort of a low, mid, and high, yeah, for, because anything, obviously, that's why we sort of set the tier at the sixty-five, because once you're getting above that, you know, obviously, our escalates faster, but that's what we're trying to get people to conserve, so.
If I may, if you look on page ten, you can kind of see what an average user, twenty-five thousand gallons per quarter, would get charged, what they've gotten charged in 2021 all the way through 2030, what they potentially could be. It's about, like Brian said, about twenty-five dollars a quarter increase each year. So a hundred bucks a year for the average user with this thirteen percent.
In twenty-five, and then in twenty-six, another hundred?
Yeah, 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 so every, every quarter goes up twenty-five dollars. Yeah, so a hundred dollars each year.
By 2028, they're four hundred dollars a year more that they're spending. So that's, that's, you know, that's a lot.
It is.
So, yeah, and it's, and I know some cities, you know, that would be in our same, oh, you know, use the tax levy to subsidize. We can't do that because we're not, not everyone's on water, so that's just not an option. Because cities do use that to soften when they do these big improvement projects. They just, you know, you add fifty dollars to someone's bill, you know, quarterly bill on the year, you can put fifty dollars on the tax levy, it's the same thing, but, yeah, we're not able.
So Brian, tonight, you're bringing this up for us to look far out. You're not bringing this up for any change in 2025, but.
Yeah, yes.
We might go thirteen, we must go thirteen percent.
Okay. You thought you couldn't change the budget once you gave it in?
This is the one.
This is the one, yeah, this is the.
This is the one.
But what then affected?
No, no.
The fees take away, though.
Yeah.
That's what.
What affects the money?
Yeah, yeah, that's why we always try to do, like, get the tax levy, talk about that more in like August and into September, because we gotta have that set, and then you try to follow up with the water sewer and the utility funds in October, November to get, because now we are gonna set those and talk about, you know, what does the council want to do for utility rates? Yep.
The other thing that's, that we also don't know at this point is, one, what the whole project for 2025, 26 is gonna cost? And is, are we feeling to be able to get any bonding money? We don't know either, so, you know, yeah, that's kind of the way.
How, how did fees come in from quarter three with all the rain and everything?
Um, yeah. Yeah, we'll probably be, I think our third quarter billing was about five hundred, five hundred and fifteen thousand. Luckily, we had taken a more conservative budget for twenty-four. I mean, year over year, we're probably gonna be down about a few hundred thousand, like from maybe 1.8 to 1.5, but to our budget, we're, we might be off by about a hundred, you know, thousand, you know, five, ten percent or so, just based on people using less with the weather.
They're probably using more now than they normally would.
It could be, their fourth quarter bill could be a little higher. People are still using water in late September, early October here, so it's possible, yeah. But yeah, I don't think we'll be too far off, I guess, of our targets.
Questions?
Kind of have to do it for me, I mean, to get infrastructure. Huge job, we need to.
I think that even over a few years is better than, I think, I don't know. I mean, I, hopefully, people see the improvements on the horizon, and we're talking about it, so there's, it's allocated towards something. We're not doing this just because we want to, we're doing this because we have to, so.
Expensive, very temper. Not that we can do any, but you can muddle, invent something. Stick out your roof as we get, we free water and.
Everyone comfortable with that?
And then talk a little bit about the WAP fees and the connection charges, where we have those.
Yeah, so.
I think we should raise those a little more than the thirteen percent. I think we should maybe go maybe fifteen percent.
Yeah, so on page seventeen's a quick summary of where we are versus where we're at. I mean, I think it's in the rate study too, but this is a quick summary. So right now, the water connection fee is at thirty-seven hundred per unit. Raising that by, you know, about thirteen percent, you know, around the momentum, is about forty-two hundred, about five hundred dollar increase. And then the trunk water charge, which we really haven't been getting, I think that obviously comes into play when, the area trunk water charge, when we develop, I guess we propose is to do that, the thirteen percent is about fifteen hundred, or going from eleven to five hundred to thirteen thousand an acre, so.
The new.
Oh, it is.
It's my, I don't know, David, you wanna explain, or do you want to? It's basically, just, basically, when a developer comes in and does their final, you know, platte or whatever, anything above the ordinary high water level, they gotta pay that much per developable acre or whatever. So if, you know, some of these, we've gotten, you know, one, two, three, even on Woodland Coast, and the different phases will get, and sometimes a little different at the master development agreement, but yeah, I don't know, if it's, I guess, ten acres, it would be a hundred and thirty thousand, right?
Because they're tiny into our systems that they have to pay for. So the connection fees and the trunk water charge and the area charge, it's also called a WAP, a water area charge, the WAP fee, basically pays for the infrastructure that they're going to be using, if you will.
The new amounts, how do that put us for neighboring communities, you know?
I think our area charge has always been a little higher end. When our connection charge isn't too bad, I think there's some cities that are at, you know, four, five thousand, you know, six thousand even. It's, everyone structures it a little differently, but I would say our area charge is probably a little more on the high end, where our water connection fee, if anything, has, you know, if we went to even, you know, four to five hundred, I don't think that'd be out of line or something if we would want to.
Yeah, it depends on the communities. If they're fully developed, their connection fees are gonna be higher, but their area charges, because they don't have developable land. So sometimes, I would wager to say, Mount connection fees are higher than ours quite a bit substantially for connection fees, but they're, they might not even have a trunk water charge, because they don't have acreage.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't hesitate to go forty-five hundred for a connection fee.
From forty-two?
We're from a base of thirty-seven hundred this year, but we're proposing to go to forty-two hundred, buddy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep. Oh, sure. Yeah. I don't think that's, you know.
When you're building a house, you know, if you're building a house or you're adding, you currently don't have one, or you wanna connect to it. I mean, I recently checked in Excel for our cabinet, oh my God, you don't wanna know anything. I mean, just to get electricity to our cabin was like ten grand. So forty-five, ten, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
All right.
So pretty much, do the utility rates at thirteen, the one area charge is presented, or the thirteen percent, raise the thirteen thousand for the trunk water charge for the area, and then do the forty-five hundred for water connection. Oh, yeah, 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 pretty much for the utility rates, yeah, they all would go up the same, the percentage or whatever. I guess that would be walking through.
Yeah.
We can move on to the sewer. Rate study with that, that's more, more conservative than that. Obviously, we have our cost of operations on two, so as far as the memo on page eighteen, the, our, I did the highlights. You have to balance that on a little over a million dollars, million forty-five. Right now, the, the standard for sewer rate for quarters at the one-twelfth a quarter. We are having that large council increase for their charges going up about seventy-two thousand, four oh four, four seventy-six. So as far as, I guess, we talked, one of the staff was moving the quarterly fee as, you know, one-twenty, one-twenty-five quarter range, and maybe start at the one-twenty, and see how it goes. I guess it's our fund, but I was doing, I guess, as far as some, it's about eight dollars a quarter, thirty-two for the year, about a seven percent increase. And then bumping up the connection and area charges by about, you know, a couple hundred dollars each there from eighteen hundred to two thousand. I guess this one, we looked at the budget and the fund there, so there's.
So here again, I increase the connection and the acreage charge really to twenty-four hundred each, and then do the one-twenty, one-twenty-five.
I think that would be, you know, most of those, obviously, yeah, when the pain, water connection or sewer connection, let's just pay that permit.
Yeah, right. I mean, you're building a five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollar house, four hundred dollars you have there.
So, and I think it's, yeah, pretty explainable, you know, from a staff perspective, that our, you know, a lot of this is a pass through to the Met Council, and we're getting charged more, so we have to charge, you know, our residents.
Who's policing the eighteen percent? Like, I see it says, based on their formula, where we're gonna have costs, who's reduced that? Eighteen percent?
Yeah, so they send us notice as far as.
They send you a notice. Kind of a modern law. They are, we should find them. I don't know, literally, it's like, who? Who polices that?
So I don't know who, they have a, they have a large order of commissioners, staff that works for them. They're appointed by the governor. So they can, they basically come up with a budget, and I think their overall budget increased by six point three percent. So their overall budget, but the formula, for whatever reason, is causing us to increase by six point eight.
When is the formula? Maybe that is.
I know, they basically take all the flows across all the cities that are in the system, and then they, they allocate it out, basically, our percentages point, you know, oh, oh, one, five. I would, you know, it's basically, obviously, their budget's huge or whatever, but I think our flow has gone up by, I don't know, it was a twenty million or something, or it was something that was, it was substantial enough where.
They're kind of a year behind others. So if they have a big flow here, then we have to pay for it the next year.
Yeah, twenty, twenty twenty-three, we discharged forty-six, almost forty-seven million gallons, and then that was just through our, I'm sorry, a hundred and seven, almost a hundred and eight, a hundred and eight million gallons through our lift stations into the Met Council system, so. And then we also have our flow through, through St. Boniface, which discharged. I have a total, oh yeah, twenty-seven, another twenty-seven thousand for.
So they, they, or they, they metered the flow that goes to there.
Well, they, we, they have their own flow meters, we have ours at our lift station. That's how we calibrate our pumps every year, we do a calibration check just to make sure that what our pumping rate is. So we are projected to be on this year because we have done more INI.
I was just gonna ask that.
Yeah, the INI makes a huge difference, like, I've got that on the, for some animals on the jet now. If you take what that, how much flow comes in through these cracks and breaks and bites, the mammals, and you look at that, and you're talking substantial dollars every year just on leaks. But we don't get charged any penalties, like a lot of cities do, because we are actively doing INI. And while we're doing, before I got here, the city have lined up a lot of the sewer lines between the houses and the lake. Already all the easement areas have been lined, which is, you know, really gets rid of a lot of that INI, and they're really happy with that, so we are projected to be down this next year. Or this year, we should be down a little bit less, so.
So in 2026, we shouldn't see that eighteen percent increase, right?
Well, one thing too, we, we have a lot of work around here, I mean, that forty-four project, we did get a lot of bang for our buck there. I mean, we got a whole new lift station, nine, eight definitely done, you know, they done, they, we got old enforcement.
The baking part?
You know, that baking, through that, we paid for it. You know, what it needed was that project that we, that we got it done, the rejoin, the lift station, twenty-four down here in Highland, and I've negotiated new curb and all the paving from the bridge to seven, and in the deal, so, you know, we'll, we'll give, you know, some benefit, you know, half, we'll get our increase, eighteen percent, but we do, we did probably get, you know, looking at what we got from the forty-four project, we probably didn't get over a million dollars worth of infrastructure from them. So of course, that was a lot much more than that, it was like a four hundred and fifty million dollar project. We were, we were pennies on that, you know, but we did get, you know, a lot of that, so.
I think we even look, I think compared to like, not like looking at our neighbors, it's always the M L B L, but I think compared to Mount and like Orno and stuff, I mean, our four seventy-six isn't too bad, and some of that.
Yeah, it's not really, that's what they're getting at.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's at least was a silver lining, or, you know, at least when I looked at that, it's like, we couldn't, you know, glad we're not paying six hundred thousand a year or something, or it's, you know, four seventy-five. But it's a lot of it's probably because, you know, Erie and predecessors, you know, and the councils, you know, did the INI and stuff, or whatever, so.
All right.
So that's one-twenty a quarter, and then do the, okay, do the, especially with the water change.
And then the twenty-four.
Do the twenty-four hundred for each of the sewer area and sewer connection, okay? Thank you.
Okay, St. Boniface, anything else?
Should be good.
All right. And then St. Boniface Pension Increase Request, how come they didn't go like the sixty-five?
So I do not know why St. Boniface is recommending the sixty fifty versus the sixty-five, which was requested, but what they're requesting from us is to evaluate it sixty-three fifty. As a, no, this is very annual pension, so every year of service up to twenty, well, it actually keeps going, but you're fully vested at twenty years. They get six, right now, fifty-seven hundred dollars per year of service, they're looking to go to sixty-three fifty. For comparison, Mount is at sixty-one eighty-five, so they're pretty close. You might ask what will happen if we form a district or a JPA, those would happen to even out and likely go, go to the higher one, so. St. Boniface is requesting that we weigh in on this request, because it's in our contract that we do sell. We're looking at, staff's recommending improving the proposed pension increase from fifty-seven hundred to sixty-three fifty. This will, the pension fund will remain at a hundred and ten percent funded, so they are all funded at sixty-three fifty. So that's the recommendation. I'll stand for any questions. First, market fluctuations. Yeah, so if, you know, if there's a big crash, it'll go down to ninety percent and then work its way up. Generally, you try to, try to be between like one-ten and one-twenty-five, you feel pretty good then. The cities are the fiscal agents, so if there is a gap and a firefighter retires, and they don't have the money in the pension, the city then has to cover that. So you always, you know, kind of an insurance to have a little bit more funded than just a hundred percent.
So how much figure is Mount done in St. Boniface?
As far as number of firefighters? Um, what does Mount have, forty?
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight? And I think St. Boniface at like twenty, mid twenties?
Twenty-two?
Something like that.
So I look at it this way, I think sixty-three fifty is still more. I think sixty, I mean, think about it, you put in twenty years of basically volunteering, and now you get sixty-one or sixty-three, whatever it is, a year. This is a dollar, this is a year, it's like less than five hundred dollars a month. How many people make it twenty years?
And it doesn't affect any of our budget, so this is all self-funded, so they have their own, own funds that they have at, you know, a broker of some sort that manages their pension. It is, it is, but it doesn't, we're not gonna have to pay more than what we normally do, I guess is what I'm trying to get to.
And then, I mean, are they, are they as busy as a Mount or?
With us, they are, definitely.
Yeah. Pretty close.
They have to do all the team training, yes, as Mount does, and they have a lot of calls. I mean, I never realized what they do. I could not realize that, so, I've just tried to, you know, no more.
Yeah.
That's incredible, stay on that for twenty years.
It is, it is, so this is on consent agenda, I just wanted to talk about it briefly during the work session.
All right, so, any other question? All right, Bayside Jennings, oh, I'm sorry, Better Benefit Analysis.
Yes, and a mayor member of council, one of the things that came up during our public hearing is all the 2025 street improvement projects are all whatever. all the 2025 street improvement projects are all whatever you're going to do for assessments. So one of the things that I kind of looked into was updating our 2022 benefit analysis that Patch Investor did for the 2023 street improvement projects. After talking to them for a little while, we've had some turnover. It's a new person that I'm talking to. And they quoted that it would be about $3,000, it would be $3,000 to update the 2022 to help be reflective of the 2025 projects, following all the dates. So it, basically, they would provide us a report that would allow us to say, oh, here's the range again for a reclamation project in 2025, based on the areas that we've kind of determined. One of the things that, you know, talking with them, they don't, they didn't feel that much would change from the 2022. And if you remember, I think the reconstruction, we did $10,000 for that. This is a little bit different for 2025 as a reclamation, a little less intense. But we do have a couple of different areas. We have a rural section and we have an urban section. One of the things that we talked about was the rural section, it tends to be larger lots, so more footage. The urban sections have curb and gutter, so and there's some spot repair that either has been done or will be done in conjunction with the project. So those things kind of, their mind kind of wash out. And the reclamation will likely be, the recommendation will be somewhere, probably the same rural and urban sections. They don't know for sure, but it's all just conversation. So one thing we could do, kind of doing the, you know, $3,000 to get it updated, is just kind of follow the model that we did in 2022 for 2023. Maybe settle into something similar to, you know, $10,000 per project or per property for reconstruct, which we don't have in 2025. And then something like 2,500 per property or 7,500 per property. Yeah, we're dropping it down real quick. 7,500 per property for like a reclamation. So the, the idea of this, I'm looking for direction. Do you want me to pursue Patch Investor to do an update for 2025? Or you have to give Allison some direction as far as what we think for, for assessments? We want to do 7,500 or a different number for the reclamation projects? Or what is everybody thinking?
I spend another two grand to basically get the same, the same data.
I'm almost surprised that the prices haven't gone up. You know, it seems like they're going up.
Madam Mayor, I mean, so we're seeing prices in the construction industry kind of stabilize a little bit because the thought that work is tapered off a little bit for these contractors. So we're seeing some more competition for public projects. Now, Chris Ball is not going to stay, I don't know. That's the, that's the challenge, the most probably the challenge in construction. Because we are, we are drafting feasibility report. It doesn't mean the council is bound to do these specialist energy that we talk about in the feasibility report. But we want, our goal is to try to, is to reflect what the council is heading towards.
And that's good. Remember, I think the feasibility report for the morning side east hill area was like 50,000, I don't know, somehow wages them about 25,000 or something. So we had a huge pushback, if you remember, and people were very, very upset. So I think it would, our best, if we could be really close to them who are wanting to or thinking of this. If, if you want to leave it up that Allison would have them just put some number out there and have that, have that done.
Yeah, and I'm just going off my here for the last reclamation project that we did. And it was either, I don't know that it really was a differentiator between urban or rural. We were somewhere around 7,500 to 8,200, you know, depending on the project area. So we were not that ballpark for reclamation projects. And so that's something the council wants to look at happening. You know, that was in 2021, I think, was Red Scrabble.
Art Scrabble, it's Stone Bridge level.
Yeah. Just happened. And then lower. The 2020, 7,500, yeah, we don't want, we don't want the numbers all. Yeah, I mean, if we do 10, we'd be, this is what we did last year, this is the 10 number.
I know. But even when you record, she says 8, let's say.
Right, we don't want that. That's never.
Well, you don't want to.
I mean, if we do 10, that's what we did last year and it's be, justify it if we need to go down.
No, no, but think about it. Last year, we did a full reconstruct and at curb and gutter, we'll charge 10. So I think it would be hard to justify now with oil prices going up, charging 10. That was, that was 10. And that was July. That was the, it's in my. So that's right. And now, you know, it already has curb and gutter. And it's a reclamation, it was a reconstruct. And my, would be hard to justify 10 when we did 10 in.
North side, was it in that reclamation? So that, so reclamation, your curb and gutter is 10. So I think he's going to go, to do a reclamation, then no curb and gutter, this year we'll be curb and gutter. Starting at 10, we can go down.
Good, yeah. Go down. Were you saying it's?
No, it's all ordered. I just don't want to be so, I don't want to go locked in. So what I'm hearing from the council is there is an update for an update on the special benefit analysis at this time. So what we would want to do then?
Plaid after you, you guys need to. No, I, I agree that 3,000 is unnecessary. But 10, what you just said makes sense with the curb and gutter. So we can help, we have to. If we stay at 7,500, do we have to do something special if we need to look at that?
No, we just hear the residents only, whatever, I don't need to.
And one thing I'll know, this maybe throws just another wrench. There isn't really a correlation in how much the project costs and what the benefit is to the property. So even though it might cost more, the benefit might not be the same. So that's kind of the balance that you have to, have to look at.
So I think what we'll do then in the feasibility report, we're certainly looking at project estimated cost for each project area. We would do an assessment calculation based on policy 50% and include that in the feasibility report. I don't know where the listeners are at right now. We don't know that we have enough information to do that. And then in the feasibility report, can you mention that 2022 analysis that was done, that $10,000 cap? So that residents have some assurances that the council has looked at benefit. You know, what, what is the maximum benefit to the property? And certainly you can see some inflationary bumps in number two over the course of, you know, 2024 years.
But Allison, when you say you are going to mention a 50% assessment, but yet would you then add that number? Or would you just say 50% assessment or max on 10,000?
That's a good question. So is that 25,000 already?
No.
Yes.
I do not want to do with that.
One thing, one thing that might come out of this too, I don't, we don't know the numbers, but the 50% might be less than 7,500.
Than 10,000.
We, we just don't know. So.
So, yes, if it's 11 and 10, I guess my recommendation would be that 50% is more than 10. My recommendation would just not reference it, saying 50% with a maximum of 10. And so not, not mentioning like amount over that.
Certainly, if the council is giving that direction, we can include that in the feasibility report. Like I said, I don't know where the calculations are coming at. So if 50% is under 10,000, we would, we would say that an estimated assessment at this time is, let's just throw in a number, $8,000. I don't know if that's correct. And then you could also include, because we were hearing from some residents that had open helps, you know, how do you know that that's a fair amount? We would reference that 2022 special benefit analysis to say like, this assessment presented, proposed assessment at 8,000 is still under that $10 threshold that the council authorized, I shouldn't say authorized, but that the council received in.
Yes, all right. Okay, we will get, okay. Bayside, drainage discussion.
Yeah, thank you. I will give this to Mr. Peters as he is an expert in this area.
So yeah, we had a phone call from a resident at 95 Bayside Lane asking to seek our assistance, see what we can do for some drainage issues. And my staff member went out there, looked at it and said, hey, there's a drain right there. Let's hook up to this drain and that's where the whole problem is. The backyards of these homes all have a drainage issue due to plantings, trees. It just burns in a way. It's just, it's kind of a real, real bad, a certain springs out there. And Mr. Roseboom out there has spent tens of thousands of dollars on painting systems in his yard, being very, collecting water. He's reading that, helping with his, and he just can't stop. And when Randy Storms went out there to look at it, talked about the drain and stuff and brought it back to my attention. We started looking into this. They cannot hook up to the drain because supposedly that's a private storm sewer that's in the backyard there. So we talked, so we went back out to him and came up with some ideas. Now maybe, you know, taking it from his backyard to the street, down the street into the storm sewer. And he was all for it. He really thought that was a good idea. And so he ended up pursuing and some contractors to get pricing on it. We don't have an issue with putting it there. I said, there's a right away permit, we're going to charge it to 250 feet. You know, help me get rid of the water and stuff like that. So he talked to his neighbor next door and he's like, well, the city did a project like that for me back in the day. And Ms. Hill out there called me and said, are you aware of all the drainage issues that we've had in the past all year? And we had a, almost an online conversation about the problems she ran into back the day after she built her house. She was, that's my home office, the first one in there. And all these things they had with the moisture here, water coming into the basement. Just the poor drain, the poor drain out there that are, the design of the area. She ended up putting in a, basically a sun pump of a station in her backyard. She has thus now built a heated shed over it so she can keep it running because it runs every day, 24. It runs all the time, basically, and she doesn't want it to freeze up. So we went to the property, so after this long conversation of, I know what she did there, so she said, you know what, I'll do some investigating. She said, well, back in the day when they were looking at it, they could tap into that drain back there because it was put in by the city. And the new owners there said, basically told Mr. Roseboom, no, you can't because it is ours. We were told by the city that it's our drain, ours to be, you know, all this. So looking back through the files, we did come across the, with her, the moisture analysis that they did in there, in her house and all of this stuff. And they come meeting to, meeting the council and asking for them. And the city did award a project, there's two different types of projects put in there. One that would be tapped into the corner drain, catch basin, or I should say the storm sewer structure where the base would end there to come in. But I guess back in the day, there's a lot of trees in there and they would have, and put down a lot of trees. They opted to go for another plan, which is to bring it, thinking back on one page, that's 13, 8. Should be on 13 of that level. But it's, it's the drawing there where it is soft, if you can move it a little bit. So they opted to go with the plan where he would have it come out of the house into this pump station there and then all to the storm sewer. It does not say it probably works, it didn't or not. I think it was higher at all. The city did pay for this project though. Looking at that, because the, the first plan, Plan A, was mixed because of tree removals that's written in there and stuff. And you might remember this very well, because you're actually listening in there as we're moving it.
All this goes, that was 22 years ago. And I've had how many hundreds of meetings since then? So.
It should go a while. But so I guess, you know, so looking at what we've done there and then when this, I don't call the neighbor just to ask about having any. I said, well, you know her, do you want to just ask her to get some documentation? So to see whether or not that is truly hers and what she has in place. And that's why it kind of, that was off the text message she got from her, that it was just, hey, the city told me at that. So I guess what we're asking for is what can be done for their areas, because we've done it for one. But I just don't want to say, hey, you know, let's just go ahead and do this. But I think that we should have have two different things done. First off, I think if, you know, if you want to pursue this, which I think it'd be good for a lot of people in that whole area to do this. Kind of have, I guess, me too, kind of a contractual, looking at the area, what's in that area, what's collecting through there, what can come through there. And what the capacity handling of that is a 12 inch. So that drain that's in the neighbor's area behind him is a 12 inch smooth PVC pipe. And they're afraid it's going to overload the system. And I can understand that. But this, I mean, a 12 inch smooth PVC, it can take a lot of water. I'd be more worried about our, kind of great structures and making that on the road than I would that pipe. So, but it'd be nice to do kind of an analysis of that area, how much water is coming through there. You know, and could that, if we just, you know, if it is decided that we can do something with that, might it work? You know, also look at the feasibility, will just having a piping system, would that work coming from his backyard in the street? Down to the catch basin, is there enough fall that would have to be incorporated in there, is there enough for that if you're even pursue it? And then also ask Kenny Gray to kind of investigate this storm sewer system, you know, is it truly theirs? There's no drainage been over anything right now, but the city put it in, it's hooked to the city system. What does it entail? I mean, somewhere down the road, I would assume in the halls of soul that had it in there, that this drain was there. I don't know if there's paperwork somewhere, but, you know, is it, you know, truly theirs or is it city owned? You know, because we put it in, we can't find any dialogue on the 88 Jenkins Cove Road of the property file. All that being in there, you know, what it was put in. The only thing we have is, go to the as-built there, the only thing it shows is this button right here, the as-built for that. The only thing it shows is it just says a 12 inch PVC pipe with a question mark with a arrow, you know, through. That's all it shows up to the corner. That's all we have on record.
Gary, the other, the other question isn't if, if the pipe itself can handle it. But if you recall, I don't know if you were hearing, it's the pond. So all that water is going to then go to that pond, the Jenny's called pond, correct?
It all goes onto the lake.
Okay, all that goes down to the lake, not into the pond?
Yeah, it will all clear there, and then it all exits out to.
But here's the issue, the pond is the issue, because the pond is what the city had problems with 12, 15 years, 20 years ago, whatever. It was undersized. And so now if you're adding water from, from.
And that's why we need to see what, you know, how much water is, you know, and how much is coming through there. That's why, you know, do a top graphical and look at that. I mean, you know, does.
There was, there was a house, there's a house.
Oh, we know the.
2015, 16 or something.
Yeah, we had a horrible trigger issue. That was, yeah, so I mean, we need to look at it. But, you know.
That I remember.
But, you know, there does need to be some investigation for these guys too. I mean, you know, honestly, I mean, I, I do feel bad for them. They have spent tens of thousands of dollars and still has these issues. I mean, I can't imagine. You know, but I don't know, you guys want to handle it, you want to, you know, what the next steps are for that. Have them, you know, look at this, if you're looking at it, if you're looking at the, it's just, I mean, if we can do some stuff like that, everybody benefits forever.
Why is this the city's responsibility? I mean, because the meeting minutes from 22 years ago, I said, here's a thousand dollars, you, you fix it, we're giving you the money, but that's it. But why, are we going to do this on everyone's property for this drainage issues? Because there's a block, like, no, it's not problems of the HOA, not the city. So like, why, why is this our responsibility?
Well, because we don't know if that's our pipe or not. And why?
We haven't maintained it in twenty-two years. And they state it's there. Nobody's like, nobody's coming to the city saying, that's the city's problem. You have to do this.
But here's the other thing. This man, he has nowhere else. He has no other options. Whereas the HOA with the pole probably had some other options. Whereas this pipe, its water is there and he can't, he can't divert it anywhere.
And the new drains, you know, that they put in place now, I mean, there would be drains through the backyards like there's now with the cold. I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of drainage options where, you know, back in the day, there wasn't these options here. Um, feeling back, this between these two developments was the driveway to the main house, to make farmland back there, has been taken for quite a while. So. I mean, yeah, I don't know. That's what I'm throwing out there. This is above my acreage. It's a roll. I'm bringing it to you guys. And uh, you guys made the decision of what, you know, what to do with it. I'm just throwing out some ideas that would help them. But it's totally up to this, you know, the next step is what you want to do with it and, you know, so.
And when was this house built?
This was built in the early two thousands, segment nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay, and this is the first.
No, not the, not the Jennings Cove, the base.
Nine oh five B side.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
This is the first time he's come to us complaining of.
Well, it's a play. He was just asking for some, yes, yeah, because he was doing it on his own. Trying to, as I say, install all these tanks in his yard and he's still getting, you know, overrun with water and stuff. So he was just kind of, and he, you know, and he wasn't, you know, mad. He was just asking, hey, what can I do? You know, is there any other option to do this? He was out of options. So he just asked us, what do we need to do? And as we just, you know, brought up that drain, Randy can see it right there. It's basically, there's a little burb in the way. You just swivel it right to the drain and there goes the water. It's gone. You know, they won't allow us.
They, they bought it in two thousand.
There's a lot of houses in Benetista and around the lake that have mushy, water-filled front yards, backyards. And I just don't know how we will determine how we help a mushy yard, a yard full of water. There's lots of them. All the houses in Landings have mushy, water-filled backyards. So I just, but they, yeah, but when you think about how the water flows, let's just take the landings for instance. They, their backyard go like this right down into Ken's Bay. I mean, they have a, and it doesn't clear here. Sometimes there's, and along uh, you know, the breezes, hall steps. I mean, they, they have ponds in their area. So if we do this for this yard, we're just going to open up a big can of sand for every other yard.
I mean, that's my question.
City water. Lots of yards with city water, some years. It, will this be a problem at some point?
It would soon.
There, that the pond.
What can that become? This would be the pipe right there. You're like, when you deem that it is, they're going to be able to have it just.
What do you think all this will come up?
Pardon?
What do you think, what do you think a solution will come? What do you think a study will come? What do you think a solution will come?
I don't, I mean.
That's what you want to say. Uh, if we're installing pipe through there?
No, first, first feasibility study. Yeah.
Oh, you're, you're looking at a few thousand dollars of these.
A few thousand. So a few thousand to me is three five.
Just for the study.
Study.
Studies just put pipe in. Wouldn't touch this in the fall, sorry. There's other, she was Gary Mitchell, who is, is another component of this is to establish who, who really does own the pipe.
And that's the, yeah, I mean, that's something back there that's not even feasible that, you know, it's in the agreements of, hey, that is, there's a company that it's ours or whatever. Then this is not void and what we're doing is piping system.
Oh, to that.
You know, so, you know, that, that, that to me is probably the first, see, is this pipe being feasible to get into, you know, if it is, then we go back and say, would it handle it? You know, would the system handle it?
But if, if the council isn't willing to do that.
If you're not willing to do it, if you don't want to do it, don't, well, I, you know, then, I mean, that's, that's your choice. You know, if you don't want to do it. If, if you're not going to pursue, you think, you know, then it doesn't pursue you that, if it doesn't even buy on bottom, it doesn't even have a one's pipe sale.
That's what I'm saying.
If you've got five thousand dollars to spend, that I'll spend it on seniors, then someone's washing the yard.
Well, we can take this storm water.
The problem is out there, there are a lot of springs. I mean, we have springs there. We have, and uh, Parker Cove has, there are springs everywhere. I mean, there's a lot of water.
That, well, that's the thing. Like, I feel bad for him and the problem that he has no other solutions, but it's not our fault. We haven't maintained. It hasn't been like every year he complains about this to us, like, help, help, help. And you're opening a can of worms if you do it for this because there's dozens of them. It'll be like, well, you recognize why aren't you putting a solution in?
Yeah, but that's not the point. The point is, is it the city's responsibility? Is it?
No.
Here's a. Well, here's, here's my take. First of all, we don't get inundated by these type of requests. If we got one every single week, then if it's, hey, we gotta have a policy regarding this, okay? We don't. This has been the first request in twenty-two years. So, um, as far as I know. Um, I always think to myself, if somebody comes as a resident constituent and says, here's a problem I have. Can you help fix it? Then I say, why not? I mean, that's why we're here. That's why we're here. We want to make people's lives better. We want to make their lifestyle, their, their, their living conditions better. So I guess what I would suggest is find out exactly what it would cost to do, um, one, you know, the um, figuring out how to, if it does belong to the city or if there's some other way of doing this. Asking this gentleman if he's interested in paying for that. Because if he said, I'll pay for it, why not? You know, so let, let, if he's interested in paying the five thousand dollars to figure out how we can take the water off of his property and put it into a city system, handle it, why not? That's the way I feel too. We're here to actually help residents any way we can without it costing the rest of the taxpayers. And I understand your point about lots and lots of different properties.
There's lots of them.
There's also costs. But we need to.
There's a ton of costs.
But if you do one, if you don't care for the water, you're going to get a lot of other.
You can actually do it.
And if you do.
The policy.
Well, the policy would be you're not going to help, you know, help us. The policy would, well, if you're willing to pay for a feasibility study.
I like that.
And to determine how, how and how we could help you, then we are willing to do that. I mean, some properties cost less than others because of those problems like this.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine if you were to pay the study. That's fine. You have to pay for it.
And we can do, but that research was a part of it. I don't think this is good.
If I may, I, I think what we need to do is find out if we own the pipe. I mean, that's the, that's the number one thing.
Yes, I was just being clear.
And if we own the pipe, then we can see, well, do you want to study to see if you can hook into it? So I think we, we still need to do, have Kennedy and Gray do a little bit of work to figure out, do we own this pipe? Is it ours? Should have we been maintaining it? And if the answer is no, then it, then this kind of.
Yeah, that is not, because there's no really other way to pursue it. I mean, I don't know. Sir, what would it cost to do something like a, a study on that? You know, to kind of see what ownership of that is or do you have a rough estimate? I mean.
Uh, may I, may I, I'm going to be less than a thousand dollars and all the properties, forums are not, forums are just a quick search. Those are a lot of such property records.
Do you know if it's twine?
I can't.
It was part of the Jennings Cove development. So I'm not sure. It's abstract.
That's it.
Isn't the Jennings Cove development? Do that and do that research and let them know why it's our job. If, if that a.
HOA.
HOA. Shouldn't they figure it out instead of our job?
It might be in their HOA declaration. If it is something that belongs, the HOA, but if it is not, it might not be addressed in their declaration. It might just be something that's recorded against these people's property, which, you know, fits the cities. They have a reason in favor of the city owning the property. It might only be a little HOA. To our knowledge, there is a easement.
There is no easement on anything. We, they say no documentation. We have that right there. It's on the, on this as标的. We may document it. We have that. Basically, no one's there. So.
So then we have Sarah look up, find out, confirm that we don't own the pipe. And then we let the resident know we don't. And then they want to pay for a study or something. But unless they're, is it?
I, I think then it's a private pipe. They would just have to work with their neighbor to see if they can hook into it. You know?
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, no, that's fine.
All right, Sarah, I guess to confirm that we don't own the pipe. That's funny to you.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Um, so next, managed detection and response tool for the city networks.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, one of the items that came up, um, Ally and I sit in on a monthly kind of network check call with Loffler, our IT managed services provider. And one of the things they brought up was this MDR, managed detection and response network tool. Um, it's essentially, I'd say, next level cybersecurity. Looking to see if somebody has infiltrated our network and is messing around, um, changing log files. It looks at just changes in our network that aren't normal. And then it flags it and it looks at it. It's something that can help combat um, things like ransomware, some phishing attacks, things like that. It's, it's another level of kind of insurance to cybersecurity um, that we have. I'd say we keep up with our cybersecurity updates on our servers and making sure everything is, is, um, you know, supported by our IP. Not just Loffler, but the hardware, um, companies, you know, we, we do a good job. We spend a lot of money on our IP, looking at Brian, because it's like, it always, there's always something. This is just another tool that they're recommending that cities and, and, you know, a lot of small businesses use MDR um, to kind of add that next level of, of um, kind of monitoring of our network. So with something like this, there's obviously a cost. Um, there's a one-time implementation fee of six hundred and seventy-five dollars and then a reoccurring monthly charge of eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Yeah, it's very expensive. Certainly, you know, ten, ten grand a year. Um.
The company is Loffler running sources or they?
They, they were recommending company perch, P E R C H. There's a couple other vendors. Um, we do MDR. Artic Wolf is another one. Their cost is almost double with purchase. Um, so.
And then so it's off, like, are we paying first directly or is Loffler taking a cut of what we pay first?
No, we play, we pay, uh, we enter into the agreement, perch directly. Loffler manages that, you know, make sure that they are on our network. So Loffler, we understand they don't receive any sort of, they don't upcharge or anything.
Does the city in Minneapolis use it?
Then I'm almost paused. I don't know. I can almost guarantee that they do have some sort of MDR system on their network. Um, a lot of small businesses do it. Um, you know, recently there are a couple of things, a little different from cyber attack. But, you know, some phishing campaigns that have been successful in the, in the squirrel and mayor and Blaine recently. So these things aren't going to go away. I always just try to stay like kind of one step ahead, but.
So that function, do we also be adding like MFA?
We do have that. So we already have MFA for people accessing the network. So all the employees that access it, we do have MFA.
Okay, I'm not against having one. I'm against saving twenty-seven dollars a month. So basically, is there something that is less expensive or that we know, we don't?
So I would say this is, this is already the discount MDR. Yeah, um, but I can come back with more, but this is the lowest one. This is the one they recommend to be most cost effective for our, our size. Um, like I said, Artic Wolf, I think, has a better reputation and they have these things called MDR wars, which people try to get into networks and Artic Wolf, one of those. Um, but they are roughly twice as much as perch.
What's the worst thing that they never? We could lose them. That's our water.
There's a lot of things. Yeah, they could get into, skaters generally air gap or separated from our network. Um, but um, you know, they could get into our financial system. They could change things. They could, you know, all kinds of different things. Yeah, so I mean, the idea with MDR is that they can kind of see what normal activity is and if there's anything outside of normal gets flagged and then whatever computer that's happening on gets partitioned right away and then it's off and then they can kind of do an examination. So it's insurance, basically.
So you, you bring this to us with respect, do you have?
We can choose not to.
The should is a.
It, it's a should. Um, I think it's best practices. Do, does every city have MDR protection? No. They don't.
How many cities do you have that?
I don't know. Um.
And if, if money is wired out of your account. Probably.
That's it's wired. It's wired, it's gone. Um, but it's generally a little bit different. A lot of times what you get is ransomware attacks. So they'll get on your network.
Kind of hit up Menetista instead of forty-three Berry. There's millions and millions of dollars.
They probably have MDR.
Yeah, Mayor got it. I mean, they'll, they'll, in all different sizes. We still have a lot of large transactions, you know, even as a smaller community.
Even with our insurance renewal each year, they always keep asking about what type of cybersecurity enhancements we're doing and that type of.
Well, I'm sure.
And they, I think they factor into their premiums.
So we're not insured for big jobs?
Well, no, we, we're insured to the max when we can.
What's the maximum?
It's like five hundred thousand or something.
Which that's, that covers the hardware that you have to get replaced, maybe.
I, I can consider it. Like, my only question is, can we take this out of our communications budget?
Oh, we, we could.
If we weren't poor in that department, yes.
At least for twenty twenty-five, if we, you know, could take it out of that, then.
We, we could. I just don't think there's enough. I think it's.
You're talking the cable fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
It's like thirty-two, there's only like thirty-one or thirty-two thousand.
It's like twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, I was like thirty thousand might be a little high.
Amongst all the funds and departments that ten thousand, it was spread to water and sewer and all the different places. It's not that big a hit on the, the general.
It's probably. I mean, it's, it's probably a good idea to do. It's just the, the atmosphere of like cyber attacks, they're always trying to get one step ahead. So MDR is what's, you know, kind of the, the newest thing that you can do. But then there's going to be some other way that somebody tries to get on our net, network. We just hope that they don't come after us.
That's a very good one.
Yeah, you don't want to wish you had it in hindsight.
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
You hate to pay it, you know?
Oh, we need to another question, okay? Um, have you gone through VPNs with bad experiences and finally taken them off completely? Thanks to Cat, things and boys. Um, and we're going to get out the same cat that's in the open. I mean, I know it's on VPN, but basically it's not something that's going to fail.
Um, we won't rely on it to gain access to our network if that's kind of what you're asking. It's just kind of, it'll sit there in the background and hopefully just monitor everything. And it won't, we won't even know it's there. Where the VPN, if something on the server fails, we might not be able to get on to the network. So. So start, start in twenty twenty-five, so January twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on to our close session. We need to close the door. Who needs to stay and who needs to go?
Um, I think maybe Dave. But then. Yeah, and we'll do a motion. Craig, you can say that. And Gary. But then, yeah, and we'll do a motion, Craig, you can say this, and Gary. Oh, yeah, if you want to read the reason on here, then I'll close the meeting down and then we'll, we won't be recording.
All right, the City Council, we're going to continue the full section of this one, so the schedule is 13:45. We're ready, we need the ten investigation matter recorded, just recording panel Smith and Visca versus Visca. Versus City, we just want to hear from Google Court, time number 27-CB-14-483. Do I have a motion?
I have to read list the whole thing.
Thank you, Miss Bracken, and Mr. Vickery made that second. All those in favor, second, I would die.
I.
All those opposed, motion passes, we are now in a closed session. Do you need?